This is really good. I assume in Maryland it's... It's like the best one. All right, seven thirty. There we go. He might want to. He doesn't need to. That is all needed.
It's better if you can use the mic than the room mics will pick up.
I'm sorry.
Oh, that's also dead. Your number?
Yours?
Live.
Name is...
Members?
Yeah.
Well, this is bad. And...
Should I just start or the ceiling might be there?
You can just start.
All the room that's going into that same floor jacket.
Megan?
Yeah. That's nice. Wow, we saw this meeting.
And last thing we back up. Should we get started or you think it's better to wait?
Uh, I think you can go ahead and I'm gonna think about that for a second.
Okay, uh, well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June 20th City Council Work Session. One is called the Meeting to Order at seven thirty-one. Uh, Cindy, can you do roll, please?
Sure. Ms. Powell? Here. Ms. Lynn?
Here.
Ms. B. Young?
Here.
Ms. Cisco?
Here.
Mr. Spider?
Your.
Ms. Turner Hill?
Here.
Mary Hart?
Here.
Thank you, Mary.
All right, we have three items on the agenda tonight. And first up is the Tanner Hill District Complain Amendment.
And we are inviting Emily Bazemore to the table, and she will lead our staff report presentation. Uh, the request tonight is to just have a discussion with staff about this. And our request is to schedule it for a public hearing and final consideration for meeting on June twenty-fourth.
Thank you. And this is your sample. Tonight council is requested to amend the chapter, Chapter Three, uh, the Conference of Plan to add the Tanner Hill Historic and Cultural Districts. The item is scheduled for a public hearing and final consideration later in June, on June twenty-fourth, uh, twenty twenty-four. Staff recommends that the city council review the Tanner Hill Historic and Cultural Districts Conference of Plan Amendment as amended since council's first work session back on January sixteenth, uh, twenty twenty-four. The Planning Commission held a public hearing for this Conference of Plan Amendment and recommended the Conference of Plan Amendment to city council for approval during their May fifteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting. So some updates since the last city council work session on January sixteen. City council was supportive of this effort back in the work session on January sixteen, where you reviewed the first draft of the Tanner Hill Historic and Cultural District Conference of Plan Amendment. City council's feedback can be found in the boards and commissions comments in the district that was an attachment to the staff report. Since January city council, uh, the January city council work session, the following groups have reviewed and provided feedback on the Tanner Hill Historic and Cultural Districts. The Historical Commission, the Tanner Hill Heritage Foundation, the Arts and Humanities Council, the Economic Development Authority, and the Planning Commission. Community engagement events were also held throughout spring and twenty twenty-four to promote or promote the Tanner Hill Historic and Cultural Districts. The Planning Commission reviewed the amendment in work session on January seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, and also on April seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. Planning Commission provided feedback on the proposal during both work sessions and were supportive of this planning effort moving forward. On May fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, the Planning Commission held a public hearing for the item. As part of the public hearing, Ed Henderson, president and founder of the Tanner Hill Heritage Foundation, and vice chair of the Historical Commission, provided public comment in support of the project. Following the public comment, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to adopt the proposed amendment and recommend the city council grant final approval. A little bit of background on this project, starting on line forty-five. So staff proposes that the legacy of the Tanner Hill community and its ties to the civil rights movement be commemorated through the establishment of an honorific historic and cultural district to be incorporated into the city's comprehensive plan. This all came, um, to a beginning on April seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, uh, with the Historical Commission request. Um, the City of Falls Church's Historical Commission submitted a memo to the city council regarding establishing a Tanner Hill Historic and Cultural District back in April, twenty twenty-three. The memo included historic background information on Tanner Hill, potential boundaries of the proposed district, and notable sites that could be included. On lines fifty-five all the way down to lines one oh six, there's a little write-up on Tanner Hill and the history and its ties to the civil rights movement. I encourage you all to check it out if you haven't read it already. Moving on to page four of the staff report, I want to touch a little bit on the Comprehensive Plan. The city's Comprehensive Plan is a policy document that guides physical development and investment in the city. The Comprehensive Plan is a long-range plan that lasts twenty to twenty-five years into the future. The plan includes an overarching vision for the city and guidance for different topics, including land use, economic development, community character, housing and historic preservation and more. Um, here on lines one twenty-seven to one forty-three, you can see all ten chapters of the Comprehensive Plan noted. For this particular amendment, we're talking about Chapter Three, which is the Community Character Appearance and Design Chapter. The chapter focuses on both the social character and the visual character of the City of Falls Church. It provides guidance on existing and future character of areas throughout the city. Themes such as history, architecture, gateway features, public art, and urban design are explored. The Community Character Appearance and Design Chapter provides a framework for developing and enhancing the community through quality urban design and case study. A little bit about the process, beginning on line one fifty-four. So Section seventeen point oh six of the city charter enables the Planning Commission to prepare and adopt individual components of the Comprehensive Plan. Section fifteen point two dash two 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 eight of the state code also gives the city council the authority to grant final approval to comprehensive plan changes previously approved by the Planning Commission. Moving on to line one fifty-nine. So here's the proposed Tanner Hill Historic and Cultural District. Again, this is a plan amendment to the Community Character Appearance and Design Chapter of the plan. Um, similar to the Arts and Cultural District Amendment, um, this designation would be honorific and would not impact zoning permitting or taxation. On line one sixty-five, we get into district geography. Um, so the Tanner Hill Historic and Cultural District includes a cluster of historic and cultural sites located in Tanner Hill that are significant to the community. Contributing cultural sites and structures are noted in purple. Non-contributing structures are noted in green. The following sites are included as part of the Tanner Hill Historic and Cultural District. There's the exact sculpture, Joseph and Mary Tanner's Home outline, Charles and Elizabeth Tanner's Home, the Tanner Hill Historic Site and Marker, the Tanner Hill Civil Rights Monument, the written stone walking trail, the Women's History Walk. Um, here we have what Turner's Man, Edwin and Mary Ellen Henderson's Home, Peter Parklet, the Transit Plaza, the Roland Road Marker, and the Galway United Methodist Church, um, whose cemetery is actually located in Fairfax. Um, and right by the Galway Methodist Church is a civil war trail marker. On page six of the staff report, you'll see the map of the proposed districts. It's changed a little bit since you guys last reviewed it. Um, one of the additions is the Women's History Walk, as well as existing murals. Uh, moving on to one ninety of, uh, the staff report. Here we're gonna look at historic figures. So brief biographies are included, um, in the amendment along with connections to the historic area and related sites. Um, so these, these biographies, um, include those of Charles and Mary Elizabeth Tanner, Edwin Bear Croft Henderson, E. D. Henderson, Louisa Henderson, Frederick Junior, George and Harriet Bryce, Harriet Foot Turner, Joseph Tanner, Ollie Tanner, um, Louisa Henderson, and Mary Ellen Henderson. On one ninety-eight, we get into the activating the district strategies. Um, so the Tanner Hill Historic and Cultural District can help honor and commemorate the legacy of Tanner Hill. Um, the amendment emphasizes celebrating the district through creative urban planning and urban design tools. Strategies for activation explored in this section include following. Partnering with the Tanner Hill Heritage Foundation to promote the district, promote heritage tourism, implement historic and cultural place-making projects, expand public art efforts in the district, explore gateway features and branding for the district, elevate the district's entitlement projects and site plan reviews, explore potential archaeological significance, complete an architectural survey for buildings older than fifty years old related to the Tanner Hill history, so anywhere from nineteen ten to nineteen seventy-four, and adding to formal oral histories. The timing and funding of individual actions would be decided as part of future budget cycles, grant availability, and private contributions. I want to touch a little bit on some of our public engagement. Um, so public engagement for this project began with the presentation of a draft map and outlines both the Historical Commission and the Tanner Hill Heritage Foundation back in fall twenty twenty-three. Since then, additional boards and commissions, as well as again the Historical Commission and the Tanner Hill Heritage Foundation, have reviewed the draft amendment, um, of year twenty twenty-four. Specific dates for each meeting can be found in the timing section of this report. Information regarding the project has been shared as part of the city's newsletter, The Focus. Uh, project updates continue to be posted onto the project web page. And to provide direct notice, city staff provided flyers to businesses and residences within the bounds of the district. Um, so we even did some library pop-ups. Uh, beginning on line two thirty-one, the staff report gets into those. City staff hosted two informational community pop-up events in partnership with the Mary Riley Styles Library. On March twenty-eighth and April sixth, vision boards were displayed depicting the draft map and the activation strategies. Flyers including information on the project and the map, as well as the draft amendment, were available for pickup and review. The events were advertised through the city's newsletter, the project web page, the EDO's social media, and the library's newsletter and calendar. Library staff created a display case with historical memorabilia, articles, photos, and resources on the Tanner Hill community and its leaders in the civil rights movement. Books on local Falls Church and Northern Virginia history were curated and a display by the keys. Uh, library staff and planning staff worked together the past few months researching and pooling information, um, for this project from the history room. And we have some photos from these pop-ups right here. You can see on the right-hand side of the screen. That's part of the, um, display case that the library staff put together. It's really awesome and lots of cool stuff in there. If you go down, you'll see some more photos, um, from that event. Yeah, there's Kim and Laura at our little pop-up stand, and there's our draft map. Um, now we're gonna move on to line two fifty-three of the staff report. Um, recently, we actually hosted an informational event at the historic site on May twenty-third. At the event, staff provided self-guided walking tour maps of the Tanner Hill Historic and Cultural Districts. Um, the district's activation strategies and the map were also on display. Vision boards, a flyer with more information on the project was also available at people. The event was advertised again through the city's newsletter, The Focus, the project web page, um, the Economic Development Office's social media, and the library's newsletter and calendar. Uh, staff also reached out to Fairfax's, um, Fairfax County's Mason District, the Providence District, and Historic Preservation staff of the county. We have a couple photos from our event. Um, the folded, um, maps are right there. And, um, on the backside, there's the historic walking tour information. So you can read a little bit about what you're seeing as you walk through the proposed districts. Um, we have some notes on review, um, from Fairfax County, as well as Nova Parks from lines two sixty-five and two seventy-one. Um, their comment letters were attached to the staff report, letters of support, um, for the Comprehensive Plan Amendment for the Tanner Hill Historic and Cultural Districts. Um, there are several improvements made in response to public input. These began, um, on two seventy-six in the staff report. So the following improvements were made to the draft materials based on public input. Um, the authority of the plan section was revised. There were revisions to the map in response to further research and stakeholder input. And then there were also, um, revisions just based off of further research and stakeholder inputs, such as the removal of the core versus the outer core. Um, now there's one holistic district instead of a core versus outer core. Um, we also added, uh, Fairfax County's historic addresses noted for their Tanner Hill district. Um, we added the nine founding members of the CCL. Um, we corrected the sculpture name and included the correct name for the sculpture, which you can also see, um, on the, the plaque at the Tanner Hill Historic Site. There's a bit of information about the artist, um, as well. We added nearby sites, such as the South Gate Neighborhood, Wall and Row Park, and also some African-American commercial properties. Um, we added a public art strategy, or we included, um, potential themes and stakeholders uh, to review public art projects within the public art strategy. Um, we included gateway features as part of branding strategy. And then there's also been a couple of new sections added, and I'm gonna briefly review those as well. So we have, um, a new section on related plans and studies, um, a section on location and boundary, a section on the authority of the plan, a section on recent history, um, a biography on Ollie, um, Tanner, a biography on Louisa Henderson, a biography on Frederick Foot Junior, um, a section on the Women's History Walk, and then a new strategy for again that architectural survey and a strategy for additions to formal oral histories. And then also an appendix that gets into the planning process and public engagement. Uh, briefly under timing, I just want to highlight again that the Historical Commission, um, submitted that memo back in April of twenty twenty-three. And here we are in, um, June of twenty twenty-four, at city council work session, having followed a Planning Commission work session and Planning Commission public hearing back in April and May of twenty twenty-four. Um, that's all for me. Looking towards your feedback. Thank you.
This is still up, so, okay. Thank you, Emily. Uh, really appreciate, especially the very thorough community engagement that you reported on. So questions and comments, Jesse?
Yeah, I just wanted to second that. I feel like this is another project that I've heard at least a dozen, half a dozen times at the EDA, Arts and Humanities Planning here. Uh, so thank you for taking so much feedback. I've heard all the feedback you've been getting. And then actually, it was great seeing that process of the, the changes. Um, I just have a few organizational questions, so nothing like too many. Looking through the actual document, on page seven, it shows the map. Um, and then below the map, it goes through some of the items that are on the map. Um, but I guess I found it a little confusing, and I was wondering if there's a reason for this, that the numbers of the items below the map don't match up with the map.
Yes, and that's something that we plan on correcting before it comes back for final action. That's, that's something that we've been, um, talking about internally, because it's, it's gonna take a little bit of reformatting to make sure that the numbers on the map match what's in the rest of the folder.
And I guess I was trying to go through and make sure that the things that we're talking about were also represented in the map. It sounds like, uh, it doesn't seem like the transit plazas represented below, so I don't know if that messes up the numerical.
Uh, that's a good point. I'll take note of that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, and so maybe include the transit plaza so that we just have the numbers associated with everything. Um, other things, I mean, and this is very, uh, formatting. Uh, would we be able to get non-watermarked photos? Um, or is it, that's just how things are?
So most of our watermark photos are from the library. I think we should be able to request non-watermark photos from the library. Yeah.
Yeah, just as a nice holistic presentation. Um, and then the final thing is, you know, I would hope by the end of the year or within the year, we'll have a name for a future parklet. Um, how easy is it to go through and update this with that information? Or is that a pretty big review?
Maybe put it with the, like, a minor edit.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm not, I'm not sure of the complete process, but that's something that we can discuss with getting the correct name and once there is a name for that parklet.
Great, and my final suggestion is, I believe the unveiling of the mural is going to be in the next couple weeks. Um, and so I don't know if it's too much of a last-minute change but to actually update the photo in there with the actual mural.
Yes, we, um, we have some photos from the historic site event, um, with the mural. So already up, then we got some, um, we can get those incorporated into the document. The beautiful, very vibrant mural.
Great. Oh, thank you. That's all for me.
What else?
Yeah, I have just a few things very quickly. So, um, thank you. I think when we were here in January, I had mentioned kind of reaching out to jurisdictional partners. So it was great to see how, um, involved and enthusiastic both Fairfax County and Nova Parks were about working together and kind of bringing increased, um, attention to the area. So thank you for that. And then also the inclusion of the CCL information on more people. It's just kind of amazing things to, um, personalize, you know, by kind of doing that additional research. Um, I had two questions on the additional or exploring additional designations for structures or sites, I guess, within the area. In terms of implementing that, it, where would that get housed? Like, would it get referred out to Harvard Historical Commission for kind of next steps? Or what will happen?
Yeah, so we've been talking a little bit about this internally, and I apologize. Um, my teammate Laura is way more volverse on, um, architectural surveys and historic preservation. Um, but I think there's an opportunity for Historical Commission or Harvard to take a look at that if we were to get some sort of survey going. Um, also, the Historic Preservation Chapter, um, appears. An update to that in the future, I think that's where we could talk even more about this strategy.
Um, and then the only other thing I had was that with the, um, soft launch of the tourism website coming up through the EDO office, kind of whether you've been in touch with them about being able to kind of incorporate the heritage, cultural, tourism aspect of this in particular because of what great information it has in that effort.
Yes, I was brought in very early on in the process for updating, um, that website with the EDO. Um, and we were able to, um, make a recommendation for the Tanner Hill Historic and Cultural Districts as we were going through that process. So there in the loop about, um, our proposed district and as we move forward, I'm sure it'll be the more incorporated into the webpage.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome. I'm wondering if you can make one addition on, um... It's a section called History Impulses Today, Presentation of Your Hill. You mentioned some seminars and Health and Industry Fair. Can you mention the Martin Luther King Junior Day Walk for Justice?
Yeah, yeah, of course. You can definitely get that in there. And we could probably find some photos of that, too, if that's good.
I'm sure you can.
Yeah.
I'd have some if they need them.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, Cindy, I'm sure has something to say. Um, one of the things that was a question in there was the difference between Tanner Hill and Tanners Hill? Did you explore that?
Yeah, so we reached out to the Tanner family about that to clarify, um, Tanner versus Tanners with the apostrophe S. And we were gonna go ahead to go with Tanner.
Go with Tanner?
Yes.
Okay. Great. That is...
And, and I would admit, all the street signs say Tanner, uh, not Tanners. But there is, uh, a coding in our GIS map, still has Tanners. And I think that is a thing for us to follow up on and, and connect it. That's not kind of, uh... It may be in Google Maps as well. We'll have to check that.
The assessment database has Tanners.
The assessment database references Tanners Hill with the apostrophe.
Yeah, yeah. Um... And then the nearby properties. I think towards the end, you mentioned a few with the nearby properties. And that was a question, one of the questions about including First and Second Baptist or Second and Third Baptist and the Falls Church Gospel. Did they make it in there as a mention of nearby properties or no?
They should be mentioned. Um, I think they might be earlier on in the chapter. But I can all confirm that. You can circle that.
Okay, that was, because I think that, you know, the boundaries of the district are the boundaries. But just like all boundaries, there's things that go outside the boundaries that are also part of that history. And this is really thorough and really good and very well written, just turns up the individuals and the place and the walls. It's really nice. Thank you. It's really good. We get memorialized in our complaints.
Yeah.
Makes it more official. So any other final comments or questions, Emily? Dave?
Thanks. So it's great to take this next step in something that started, what, almost twenty years ago? Over going there with Congressman Moran and Jerry Collin, who are just chair of the Fairfax County, um, supervisors. And a lot of work has been done at city staff, Cindy in particular, since then. So it's great to take this next step, and I can't wait to take it. So let's move forward as fast as possible. I did have one detailed question. There was a Union general Crocker who, I think, purchased the land because African-Americans weren't permitted to own land at some point. So you may want to mention that. It's critical to not forget the, uh, the contribution of the Union Army that after all won, won the Civil War. Um, but certainly it shouldn't detract from the other critical, uh, elements of the story that we've already mentioned. So just a thought for some recognition there.
Just one comment. There's, um, on the Related Plans section, it refers to an appendix, three S's. So I, I just want to make sure we, um, there's no appendix titled three S's. So just, it's a little thing. But other than that, I really appreciate the thoroughness of this. It was, um, um, I was reading through it, so, thank you. Great. Nice work, Emily. Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty, we're slightly ahead of schedule.
Don't say that.
Yeah, yeah, famous last word. I know.
Just jinx.
So our second item is a Pearson Square application. Tonight, we'll hear the applicant's case. Jeff?
And so we'd like to invite Mr. Williams, uh, forward to the table, and, um, he will provide the, um, applicant's report. And, um, I don't know, Ms. Williams, if, if there's anyone else planning to attend virtually. Um, brother Spade, nice shirt.
Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you so much.
That one.
Yeah, that one, yeah.
Thank you, and good to see everyone tonight. Um, my name is Zach Lane. I'm the Lieutenant of Ethable. I'm representing the owner of the Pearson Square, uh, project, Pearson Square Condominium. Um, and we have filed a special exception application in this matter, and it's a fairly simple request. Um, the request is essentially to be permitted to terminate the condo regime on the property. That is the extent of the request. Um, I call it a paper condo. Um, and the reason for that is because it's not really a condo in the sense that it has been a rental apartment building since it was built in two thousand and seven. There's two hundred and thirty residential apartments in this building, fifteen of which are affordable housing units. Um, it has always been two hundred and thirty residential apartments, um, since the day it was built. It's never been operated as condos, and the owner never intends to operate the building as condos. Yet, there is a condominium declaration and associated bylaws in the Lambrecht's. And so technically, this is a condo. Uh, even though it doesn't operate as one, you went to the building, you're gonna think it was one. All rental tenants, always has been, always will be. And there's, um, a number of reasons why the owner seeks to terminate the condo. I think number one being that it's not of any use to the owner. And it is inconvenient in the sense that the owner has to deal with two hundred and thirty residential tax assessments every year instead of just one. And so that alone creates paperwork and creates expense for the owner that isn't necessary. Um, there is no need for two hundred and thirty individual assessments because this is just really one building under common ownership, always has been, always will be. Um, and that's probably issue number one, why the owner would like to, um, terminate the condominium. The other reason is that, um, under Virginia law, um, even though a building is not operated as a condominium, it can still be assessed as a condominium. Uh, and that matters because, um, as of now, and this could always change, um, a condominium apartment building is assessed at a higher rate than a residential rental apartment building. Um, and so again, the owner is paying, or being, uh, receiving assessments for the use of a building that it's not taking advantage of because it's a rental building. It's not a condo building. And the reason why, and I don't want to get into the details of tax assessments and real estate tax assessments. I'm not a real estate appraiser in any case. But generally speaking, my understanding is that part of the reason why the assessment is higher is because there's the flexibility, there's the ability to sell these units if the, the owner wanted to use them. Um, and there's value in that. But the owner doesn't want us to do that. Uh, the owner wants to operate as a rental building indefinitely. And so the owner is willing to give that up, if you will, um, and just have to see a rental building. So why does that bring us here tonight? Um, the reason is because, uh, our position, the owner's position is that, that it should be just allowed to do this. And it... And if there was no special exception, if there was entitlement, as the declarant, the owner of the building, typically you could just terminate a condo. It's a one-page document, you sign it, you file the land records, the condo is gone. The only thing that's preventing the owner from doing that is that the zoning administrator has interpreted the special exception to require a condo to remain in place. And because of that, the owner does not have the ability to terminate the condo. And if it did, it would be in violation of the zoning administrator's interpretation of the special exception. There is an appeal pending on that issue. It was served by the DCA. The owner is preparing an appeal to a circuit court on that issue, really just to protect its rights. These are very tight timelines and so it's 30 days. So the owner has to do that just to protect its rights. But we're here because my client, the owner, would really love to resolve this issue here with the city council. And not go through an appeal, an expensive appeal, adversarial appeal. I think the owner is looking for a quicker, more efficient resolution. And so has filed sort of parallel track. Ways to get there, and this is one of them. Even though the owner doesn't agree that the special exception requires a building to remain a condo, given that's the zoning administrator's interpretation, it hasn't yet been overturned, we filed this request. And the city council has the ability to permit this building, this condo to be terminated. That's the zoning administrator's interpretation. And so that's our request. And I think part of the difficulty, and I know this in Staffordshire, we haven't filed voluntary concession, amendments to the voluntary concessions yet. Part of the difficulty is that there is no voluntary concession that says this must be a condo. There's sort of a patchwork of references to this potentially being a condo and that's the zoning administrator's interpretation, which I'm not here to debate tonight. But it's, it's not a straightforward request where, for example, last spring we were here on the same project, we were seeking to change some of the retail allocations. And it was very clear, we're going to change these allocations in this concession right here. That's going to allow us to move forward with this tenant. And the city council approved that, the tenant is now operating and it's been a success. It's more complicated here because there is no condition or concession that says you must be a condo. So that's something we have to work out with staff as to how we get there. But the bottom line is it's a fairly simple request. This is a building that's in high demand, it's a rental apartment building. I believe it's a 95% lease. It's an older building. And so it's a, it's a building that has larger units than your typical multifamily buildings built nowadays. So it's better for families. And there's been a lot of interest in the building. So the owner doesn't seek to or intend to ever sell these condominiums because it's been a really successful building as a rental. And so that is, really concludes my, my presentation tonight. We'd love to continue to move this along and continue to discuss this and see if we can find a way to resolve it. But just to be completely candid, we are going to pursue the appeal as well because we have to. I mean, we have to, either we pursue that or we give it up and we lose the ability to ever pursue it. But that takes a while. And it's not something that will be resolved next week or next month or maybe even this year. It takes a while to wind through the process. So that gives us time to see if we can resolve this through this process, which is why I'm here tonight. So thank you.
Well, thank you for your presentation. I think we will look to staff to provide the city council with a recommendation and we'll take it up at a future meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks.
It's been still on. Caroline's got to talk to her.
Yeah, can we, can we take?
Did we take five or is it?
Yep, it's still on.
While we work through tech.
We, well, to take care of tech, that's a.
Yes.
It's order of.
Fifty-five minutes.
Yes, let's take a break. Delete fifteen, delete one.
The other guys ran through this.
Is your dinner still sitting somewhere?
Uh, it's not for eating, but it's okay. I live close.
Okay, if you'd like.
So we wanted tonight to provide the council with a brief update on the H back, the community center H vac replacement project. We will be coming back to council, we anticipate in July to discuss for council to consider a contract authorization. But we wanted to touch base with council just on our planning and turn it over to Lionel for that report.
Thank you, Wyatt. Good evening, council and the mayor, Harden. My name is Vanna Malart and I am the project manager for the Falls Church Community Center H vac upgrade. And so tonight, I just want to give you guys a brief update on where we stand. And if we can go ahead and just click to the next slide of the introduction. So just some quick history, as we're all aware, the existing HVAC system in the original building is well past its design life. And so what we've been working on for the last year and a half is a new energy efficient, modernized HVAC system. And tonight, I'm going to give an update on the project budget, schedule, the relocation plan for Parks and Recs, the farmer's market impacts, and the investment tax credit approach. So the budget actually has not changed since the last time I presented to you. We're still looking at a three point nine million dollar construction budget. One million of that is covered by the ARPA funding, so really the gap we're trying to close is a two point nine million dollar value. Most of the project costs and from the construction costs is about three point two five million. That includes the geothermal system, the new HVAC system, so all the heat pumps, pumps, ductwork piping, the insulation of the gym, all the demolition that is associated with the project, the asbestos abatement, all the project management supervision from the contractor side, special inspections, permitting, the structural steel that will be supporting the new HVAC system over the administrative areas on the second floor, the painting of the gym, new lighting and reconditioning. And then, not to go through too much, but the design cost is about one point nine or a hundred ninety six thousand dollars. City project management costs are about a hundred fifty thousand. That includes project management supervision and procurement for the city staff. And then we're looking at about a hundred eighty thousand dollar contingency. And then with the tax credit, we're anticipating, we're looking at about nine hundred thousand dollar return on this from the IRS. But I'll get more into that during the tax credit approach slide just later on in the presentation. So this is a high level schedule of the project. The key points that I would like for you to focus on is the geothermal well installed. So originally, we were anticipating starting that sometime in February twenty twenty five. But given the logistics and the site constraints, I've discussed with the geothermal contractor to potentially move that to the end of November of twenty twenty four. So that will free up the space and time for the actual interior construction component of the project. Again, this is more so for logistics. I don't want to have the entire front of the building, you know, torn up. And then also have these sides of the building occupied as a laid out area for our construction equipment staging. Again, this is just something that we, or besides the project team, that would benefit the project schedule to give us, I guess, optimum of space. And also, we have a lot of deliveries that will be taking place, so it'll be really difficult with that tight parking lot to get, you know, putting back there and low boys and flatbeds and delivery of all our material for the project. So we are looking at starting that well system sometime in late November. I can get into the market or the farmer's market impacts later on in the slide. Another key takeaway from this is the interior construction component will start sometime in late February twenty twenty five. Right now, I think project schedule says the twenty fourth of February. So this has been coordinated with Parks and Recs. Again, we're trying to avoid too many impacts to their programming, such as their basketball camps, senior programming that they have on a daily basis. So it seems that the February twenty fourth, twenty twenty five date is going to be the most beneficial for not only the project start date, but also for Parks and Rec staff. We anticipate a fifteen month construction schedule. Turnover back to Parks and Recs and ready for them to use the building in time for their summer camps. So that'll take place sometime on June seventh or sometime in that week of June seventh, twenty twenty five. So as I said, a fifteen week construction schedule, all of our contractors have been on board with this. This is what we've been planning on. This is what we have our five weekly meetings based off of. So we're all very confident that we'll be able to get the project done within that fifteen week timeline. So the Parks and Rec relocation plan, so myself, Danny and Amy have met pretty frequently to discuss how we should go about maneuvering their programs and their staff as far as trying to minimize the impacts to their services and to their staff during the construction schedule. So the construction dates, as I mentioned earlier, February twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, June seventh, twenty twenty five. We've been working with the Boy Scouts, VFW, which is American Legion, and the Falls Church City Public School System on temporary relocation sites. As of right now, Parks and Rec staff is going to relocate to the South Oak Street offsite trailers or classrooms that are located next to South Oak Elementary School. We believe that provides ample space for Parks and Rec staff to continue their functions. And then for VFW, I'm sorry, we've been working also with the Boy Scouts for the senior programming. That's still being ironed out. That isn't necessarily the finalized location. So we've also been talking with VFW and Columbia Baptist Church as alternate sites for the senior programming. We believe that they have better accessibility for parking and just access to the overall building. So that might serve as a better temporary location for senior programming. Funding for these temporary sites to come out of the project budget, I believe that these should be able to be absorbed. Little impacts, again, we're working on finalizing that project budget as we speak. But I believe that this can be ensured by the project budget. Any funding that's required for leasing or any modifications that might be required to the Boy Scout house if we do elect to use that space as a senior programming. And then some of the major impacts that we're avoiding, one of the reasons why I'm waiting until after or till late November is to avoid the number of November fourth presidential election. Obviously, it's a big, big activity for the community center. Lots of people come in and out of the building during that day. So we believe not doing the geothermal well still after that would be most beneficial. And then also, the Parks and Rec is revenue generator, summer camps is what we're also trying to avoid. So that's why I have to have it done in January seventh. Next, the farmer's market relocation. So with the geothermal well system taking place in that front drive aisle of the community center, it takes the emergency services access to the Falls Church campus or the city hall campus away, which is obviously a problem and we can't afford to have that happen. So we are relocating the farmer's market from the front and or sides of the city hall campus to the back. We're still working out as far as the exact layout of where these vendors will be back there or back in the rear parking lot area. But we do have space and we're coordinating with the farmer's market coordinator as well, Danny and Amy are. But she seems to be on board as well with this relocation plan. Again, this is just temporary. It's going to go on six to eight weeks for this transition period. But once we're done with the wells, we plan on moving the entire farmer's market back to its original location along the front sides of city hall. Again, this is only something that's going to take place for six to eight weeks, trying to minimize the impact as much as possible to the farmer's market. But we had a buy-in. Lastly, is the investment tax credit approach. So I've been working with my geothermal designer, who is actually an expert not only in this area, but all along the eastern seaboard. He traveled along up to New York and Maine and all the way down to Georgia, dealing with these geothermal wells and helping localities and universities and schools go through not only the design process, but the tax investment credits and try to get it to be a return for these energy efficient systems as possible from the IRS. So first is the investment tax credit, which is the upfront cost that we are putting in for the labor, material and equipment, as well as the anticipated energy savings and carbon reduction from the system that we are implementing at the community center. This would be a return in the form of a direct pay. And so that would take place once the system is operational, listened, tested and commissioned and is actually verified that it is performing as designed. This is something, again, that we're working with the tax consultants and the geothermal designer on a pre-qualification process. So again, we collect all the costs that are associated with the project. My contractors and designers have all prepared their proposals in a way that is audible so that when we send this package to the IRS for the pre-qualification process, the IRS will review it, come back to us with the costs that are qualifying because we are a tax exempt organization. But since we do pay taxes on construction costs, they believe that this would be the best approach as far as maximizing our return. Secondly, once the system is operational, there's a vehicle for a performance tax credit. So this is where we're actually auditing the system, comparing it to historical data and energy usage from the building. That's going to be obviously with the gas and the electricity and the comparing it to the new baseline of the system that we have installed and showing we have not only reduced our energy consumption, but we've also reduced our carbon emissions at the source. So that is something that I'm still working again with our consultant. It's very complicated stuff, so I'm learning as I go with this. But it is, it is seemingly a benefit or a positive thing for the city. And I do think there are some savings to be had there, but we won't really know what those are until this pre-qualification process has been completed. And then, as I said, the report provides the IRS that the system operates as intended and the city follows that up with our tax claim and that's likely to take place in late twenty twenty five. So we'll have more information on that in July, once I come back to do the contract authorization for Nova Facility Solutions. That's the only one that I anticipate coming to you all for in July because they have the meat of the project. A lot of the other contracts, I'll be using our annual contracts that we already have on board. And as long as we haven't exhausted or come to the close of those limits on usage, then I shouldn't have to come back to you guys for that. But I guess as an example, our paving contractor, who will be restoring the front drive aisle of the community center, we obviously use them for annual paving around the city. And so I believe their cap is a million dollars. So if we're at like eight hundred fifty, nine hundred thousand dollars and I need, or I have a hundred and ten thousand dollar proposal from them, then that will trigger a contract authorization. Or is it a contract authorization or is it just me just asking for permission to exceed or?
You'd be an authorization too.
Okay.
For a new dollar.
But yes, Nova Facility Solutions is the big one. That would be the two point four million dollar contract authorization that year changes in July. But other than that, that's my update.
Great. Thank you, Lionel. I think we have some questions. Mary Beth, you have one?
Can you back on to the alternate site locations? This is a quick question. The VFW is not the VFW next to McDonald's, right?
No, I believe it's the one. It's the one off. Uh, yes.
Okay. And then as far as accessibility for seniors? Is that what you're looking at with the Scout House?
Yes. So they have accessible parking and they have a ramp that takes you to the building. It's just a long ramp. It goes off to the side and around the back and up through the back of the building. We would like something that comes right off the street or off the parking street to the building.
Does it look like Falls Church High School?
No, we have not.
Yeah, that's very accessible from the building. All the way to school there, but they, I know they have their seniors on the first floor.
I mean, we'll definitely locate that. I think the Columbia Baptist Church is actually a great alternate site because it's brand new and it's huge.
Absolutely. Yeah. And then my second question is over the next page. And it just raises the tax credits. Just some clarification on that for me. Is it, do we pay? We don't pay taxes. Who gets the credit?
So, and maybe Cindy or Andy might jump in, but everything that I have done with the city, when we have contractors who do work and they submit our tax exemption form to vendors, many factors or contractors, they don't have to accept it. And that's happened before on projects where they're like, oh, we don't, we don't take this. You have to pay taxes on this. Because they have to pay taxes.
Oh, and I can add, in this particular case of that, it was set up for taxable entities and then for local governments, they did a direct pay because we're tax exempt. So we'll get the credit as you were, but it's more of a lump sum direct pay. They come in and they want to pay instead of the tax credit. Everybody in the community just calls it a tax credit because they're used to that under federal law. But even though we're tax exempt, to encourage the energy efficiency, local governments can get the tax credit. Still got to do all the paperwork.
Yes.
I understand that, sorry.
So there's, so the benefit of the folks that Lionel's been recently working with is that there are several different potential opportunities for money back from the federal government for a project like this. The primary one that's going to drive the big number that I think we care the most about is what Cindy's talking about. And it's, it's a tech, it's a refund from the IRS. We don't pay taxes, so the federal government's been spending the last year setting up a new process through the IRS called direct pay that Cindy was talking about. And so, so that's kind of the anchor of the whole thing. That's the investment tax credit that Lionel was talking about. There are a couple other things that are potential opportunities that the.
Like the Murphy Building Energy Efficiency Tax Credit.
Yeah, there's a couple other things that get into, you know, what the contractors are paying taxes on and other things that could trickle down and have a benefit for us. It isn't, the big piece is the thirty percent direct pay tax credit that we've been talking.
I don't mind it. So we see the money benefit and not the contractor though.
Correct.
Yes.
That's an important part that we care about, kind of.
And that's one of the purposes of the pre-qualification process is because once we submit all the paperwork to the IRS, they edit and then they say either yea or nay or like how much of the costs are actually reimbursable through that lump sum or direct pay. And then once we get that thumbs up, then we know at least what we should look for as far as return.
The U S Treasury and the IRS are setting up an online portal, just similar to ARPA, just a different topic and pre-qualification. So actually today, the Government Finance Office Association did a meeting on that. So between Lionel's direct consultant and VFW, we're giving details with a lot of questions.
Yes.
Thank you for walking us through this. There's a lot of moving parts and lots of pieces to this project. Can we go back to the farmer's market slide? Yeah. So my understanding, the construction staging area would be just that front drive aisle? Would there also be anything to the side of the building or would be mostly in the front in that driveway?
So essentially two phases. So the front drive aisle will be phase one. That's the geothermal well phase. And the reason why I moved this, the geothermal well up is so that I don't take that drive aisle and that shaded aisle parking alongside the community center. It's half covered in orange, the remainder is in gray and white. But if I were to wait and do it in February and also the interior portion of the site, then I would essentially be taking the entire drive aisle and everything along the side.
Actually, so basically from November twelfth to February twentieth or whatever, fifth or something, it would just be that drive aisle. Then once we switch over in February, it would be the side.
Yes, November, late November to six eight, so I'd say mid-January is when we would have that drive aisle and then we would give everything back. And then come February, someone will come back and take that side out. Now, I'm still working through logistics as far as like maybe during the day, that drive aisle might be closed off just so that when I have huge deliveries come in, I can have them offloaded in that drive aisle. But it would be open back up in the evenings and weekends. And if I don't have any delivery due that day, then I'd probably open the drive aisle back up.
And so if that drive aisle is closed off, that means that people would not be parking there? Or would there be some sort of, I guess there is a road on the side of the building, but that's one way of the conversation.
Well, because during the day it's closed off, so the only spots that are out front right there are the eighty accessible spots. But since the community center will be closed to the public, there won't be any necessary need for those spots.
Okay, so wouldn't be taking up the entire drive aisle since that curse could not get through? It would just be a portion of it, such that curse could get inside that parking lot?
Well, cars will be able to get in off of Little Falls where the red is. So during construction, if I take the drive aisle for the day for material delivery and offloading, you'll still have access from Little Falls where the red shaded area is. So like any traffic to and from the site, like pedestrian or citizen traffic will not be impacted to access the city hall campus, no matter what, when that drive aisle closed during the second phase of construction.
Yeah.
First phase, you will not be able to drive through. It'll be torn up and be backed off. Yes.
So where do people park to access the orange?
They park in the red. It's a good place. Yes.
Is it comparable number of spaces or?
Uh, yes. It's from Daniel and Amy, they leave literally the space as far as the vendor area location and the parking is the same. It's like swapping houses.
By then, the other garage will be definitely open and Broad and Washington, so we'll have another more parking spaces available to us.
Yeah.
Can I ask, how deep are we digging these new children?
Five hundred feet. Yes.
That contingency of a hundred fifty K, where do you think you're gonna?
A hundred eighty thousand.
Eighty, where do you think you're worried about in terms of cost? Where do you think that can be?
Construction, you have unforeseen things happen all the time, different conditions. They might, you know, get tearing or something like, oh crap, you know, we didn't expect this to be here. We have to remove it. And so we fight it, you know, over costs. At least I have a contingency to help there. Our here is the cost, that's something we're going to get to work on.
When you're drilling six hundred feet, I think there are unexpected things you might fall into. I was worried that your contingency was a little too short, given our lack of experience with drilling that far deep.
Well, we have, our experience may be limited, but the contractors and designers' experiences. The people who are doing this are professionals. And you hear like, we were looking, like the biggest hurdle for us is looking at like utility conflicts. Something like, obviously we drill down two hundred fifty feet and all of a sudden it's sand and the holes collapse. And now I have to put like casings in there. That's a different story. But we did do tests in the area on the slip conditions. And we're confident that that's not going to happen.
Are you familiar with the contracts and the change in insurance process? How much that vendors can absorb in case?
Say it again.
Are you familiar with the contracts and the change in insurance process, particularly for that?
For the geothermal well? I mean, yes, they have a contingency of their line items for casing. They're not anticipating on using, but they carried it for potential, you know, issues.
So they've got contingency, then we've got contingency.
Well, that's a, that's a, I would, not contingency is a line item for casing. And I think it's for about a hundred fifty foot casing for each well. And that's based off the sampling that they did. Would call it contingency.
And how many did they sample? Mind me, how many?
Uh, we did one well next door to the building. Yes. Yes.
And how far apart is it?
Uh, twenty feet. But we also have historical data from the community center or city hall campus for the geotech reports as well.
Karen, her hands up.
Yep, I have a question. So the November to February phase one dates, it, from the presentation, it seems as though the community center programming, the rec and park programming is still taking place during that time? So is the, is the access to the building through the back door, like is the entire front drive aisle shut down and then everyone's using the back entrance for what's happening?
Front door will remain accessible. We're not taking up the sidewalk. It's just those three eighty eight mark and spots at the front. Yeah. But you will go leave one hundred percent access to the building during that time. And then we'll likely move those eighty eight spots to the side where.
Same working is.
Yeah.
And then the November to February date, it's what, three months? But there's six to eight weeks of actual kind of drilling or whatever it is. Is the three month period sort of accounting for weather issues in January and February? Or what happens with drilling like in the?
So that was illustrating the potential of starting either the last, the third week of November or that last week of February. But since I've prepared this presentation for you guys last Wednesday, so now I've had more discussion with the geothermal drilling contractor and they've verified that they can give me at least one rate starting November. What is that date? Twelve, twelve.
Yeah, right. So like, so you're drilling, what, fifteen wells? So what happens in like January when there's this no storm like?
I mean, then it would be a slight delay. I mean, these guys work in pretty messy conditions. It'd have to be drilled bad, storm driven, not drilled.
No, no, that's all I'm trying to figure out. And then in terms of the neighborhood, you know, impact and Little Falls accessibility. So I know you said the community center is accessible during phase one and then becomes inaccessible and sort of, you know, there will be.
Ugly.
Ugly, yeah, for November to February. So, you know, we kind of just had public comment recently on the outreach or not kind of doing as much outreach along some of the disruptions in other projects. And I mean, the neighborhood, I don't think at all has been contacted or appraised of. And I know part of this is like we're in June and we're talking about November. But in terms of like, it seems like it's going to be a significant impact in terms of accessibility on Little Falls. Like where are the rigs getting parked? Like, you know, the one, the one drill, test well, right? It takes up a significant amount of space. So in terms of how you envision the setup.
So the drills are going to leave footprint of that drive aisle. Now, when we have material delivery, you may have a truck pull up to the front of the drive aisle to offload or load equipment onto it. But I mean, at that point, you're still going to have traffic passing. And if they have a lane closed during that time, they would flag it. But I mean.
So the drill, like the drill isn't the rig isn't sitting in the middle of Little Falls for like a month?
No.
Okay.
Absolutely not. If it were to ever be out there, it'd be for like one well. But it was still, they'd be flagging it and you'd have traffic passing back and forth. But we're going to have power to keep it all inside of our site.
Other questions? Dave?
Sure, thanks. So I, how long will the community center not be available for activities? Unless they're really done.
Today's meeting will be so from February twenty fourth till June first to the seventh.
So I think it's going to be critical to prepare for the community readily accessible. So I think it's gonna be critical to prepare for the community readily accessible, um, talking points, if you will, about why this approach was selected. Um, and they're gonna ask about costs. Does this cost more than if we put in natural gas? They're gonna ask about is it disruption greater because we're doing this? And disruptions have a cost. So the point that I wanna make is we need to be prepared to discuss with our community before and during. Why we're doing what we're doing and do our best to minimize the, um, the disruption, which I know you will. But it's gonna be there. And I keep thinking of Metro Redline publicity today. And you're gonna have a perfectly wonderful project, absolutely needed, but you're gonna have to work very carefully with the public. I have a couple other more risk management questions. Is there any danger to city property or private property as a result of the drilling of the wells? And then the next question is, do you have a drilling like water table? Does that affect the wells and the cost of the wells?
Um, so to the first point, we do not anticipate any impacts to city or public infrastructure outside of obviously the drilling. Um, again, the biggest impacts that we're trying to avoid is utility conflicts. Uh, there are a lot of utilities over along the side of the community center that run along Little Falls Street in the drive aisle. And so we lay out our wells in any way to avoid hitting any of the gas or water lines or anything like that um, with an archery footprint. And then to your second one, can you repeat that one more time? Your second one.
That related to damage, um, damage to the city with, with.
Oh, you're not looking up the top of the water table.
Yeah, water table.
Uh, so that was in the engineer's report for the, when we did that test well. And he actually did not note anything that would seem a hindrance to our drilling operation. Um, again, like with the whole purpose of the well system, it acts like a big old heat sink. And so.
That's the one, just wanna.
A big old heat sink. Um, and so it definitely factor the water table level uh, into their calculations for the, for the geothermal well heat transfer properties, um, for the system. But they didn't make any note of that being an issue where the water table is located. As a matter of fact, while we were drilling, I can be hitting water at about fifteen feet. Yep.
Okay, I, I just think particularly the risk management function in the city needs to pay particular attention to this because it's relatively new. It's a high traffic area of cars and more importantly, people. And we're gonna have to manage that very carefully. And then I think we're gonna need to constantly present to the public why we're doing our work.
Okay, sounds good. Also, it's a closed system, so it's not like we're draining the water table or anything with this, with this well field. Uh, we're not sucking the existing water into the system and using that in our, in our heat. It's all closed in together. We had a mixture of water and glycol is sited through.
Yeah, you pretty much drill well below the water table, right? But actually, during the drilling, you're gonna hit the water table, right? So you're gonna have to deal with the water.
Yep. Got an ENS plan for that.
I think the communication is important also on the promotion of, in, in our government operations energy plan. Like not just the risk management side, but it's actually, you know, the positive aspects of it too. And, and to your point of your consultants and they're addressing how much carbon we're reducing, how much more efficient it is, tax credits, all of that should be counted into it. It's obviously more expensive still and there are risks. Although we have residents who have geothermal and we have geothermal at the high school. So we have examples in Falls Church where we have done it successfully over, you know, de- over a decade experience with the city, so.
And all of the county also is that apparently a, a leader in this geothermal well system, especially at their schools. Probably a lot of them have these geothermal wells.
Yeah.
Um, but yes, once the, so once I do the contract authorization, get the final pricing situated. Um, we're in harmony right now. We've just answered the comments that we received from our permitting, our building safety folks. So those will be resubmitted to them this week. Um, then we come after contract authorization, that's when we would pivot towards the outreach. And now that we have everything finalized, and start providing updates to the public.
Two more questions. Can you, the geothermal wells are five hundred feet, which is about the height, the depth of the height of the Washington Monument.
Yes, five hundred fifty-five feet, accurate.
Right, right. So it's that deep. How, what's the diameter?
Uh, the casing is six inches, but the wells themselves are like two and a half, three inches.
So it's very small. Well, 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 well.
Yeah. Yes.
Last is not fitting in that well. Last is not fitting in the journey anymore.
No, not here. Little tiny little. Um, and then my other question is related to letting the community know. I would love to see like a big sign, like the size of that TV screen there out next to the project. So anybody that wants to buy can buy that about a QR code and that. This is your tech dollars at work and this is part of the government energy action plan. And this is why we're doing it and what it means so that anybody, whenever they see it, will be able to have that link up front instead of having to go through that.
Oh, yeah, we can definitely do that. The walls, when we put the fencing up, we can have like a plaque on the side. So people walk up to it, they can see their.
Really good idea.
Understand it, yeah.
I had two things. Um, a while back when we talked, there was some sort of like mural planned inside the community center gym? Is that still planned and it's part of the project?
Uh, it's not part of the project, but I told them to wait until we're done with the project so that we can cover the wall. And then they can move forward with the mural.
Um, great. Well, thank you. Cause I think last time we talked, you said when you're back, you would tell us a proposed project schedule. So given all the comments you've heard, I think the next step would be the community outreach engagement. And this is close to final schedule. I do think that it'd be good to do education and then communication on impacts. And the sequence of things that people should expect in terms of, hey, senior centers moving here, you know, classes are moving here. Once we have those details, I think having a really thorough communication plan is great.
Well, that sounds good.
Is that something that our communication structure can work with, you know?
Is that, okay, okay. Um, just as long as we're on the topic of communications. Um, there were our kids in high school that are part of the energy sustainability group that were very interested in this, in geothermal. So if there's even coordination with the schools, I don't even know what in some level. For, yeah, field trip to actually see what's going on, that could be another way of educating the community.
I would love to do that.
Give them a hard hat. Yeah, awesome. Okay. Thank you, Lionel. We appreciate the update.
Thank you. Thank you. And as, uh, Mr. Mallard is leaving, I will just say how fortunate we are to have, uh, project managers like Lionel on city staff who can handle projects of this complexity. So thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Wyatt. Appreciate it.
And you live nearby and can leave the dinners behind.
I know, right?
Exactly. Thank you, guys.
Night. Dinner's still warm. Still forty-five minutes of schedule. I think we're moving into consent now, right?
So consent, uh, we do have a long consent calendar that we're requesting for next week. And I'll just do a quick run through of them. Um, the EOP, that's something that we do on a regular basis. And this is an update to our existing emergency operations plan. It's a pretty technical document. Um, we put it on consent, but Joe Carter will be with the council next Monday um, so that we can receive in public our storm ready certification from the National Weather Service. Uh, but if you have any specific questions about the EOP, he will be, um, at the beginning part of the meeting and can address those. But we're very pleased to have this update and the whole team has worked very hard to have this refreshed for it. Um, the CBBG item is the implementation of what the council has already agreed to with the MOU with Wesley Housing. And that is to use our annual CBBG in home allocations and dedicate those funds towards the maintenance and upkeep and capital expenditures associated with properties at Virginia Village. And so this is the technical execution of what the MOU calls for.
Not one why, I know we talked about it, um, but the people who were previously grantees of these funds will now have to apply through a different grant program? Have they already been notified?
There, uh, there has been communicate, good communication about that. And so they, um, they are aware. Um, then the next ones are all, um, basically continuations of things that are already in effect. And so the next two are simply changing the dates to extend those two agreements on for another year. Um, one relates to our agreement with Fairfax County. Uh, this is sort of a management team agreement that we have, uh, with Fairfax County through the use of our, um, um, county contracts. The next one is the Comm- uh, Comprehensive Services Act. And what that does is allows Arlington County to use CSA funding for their, uh, for girls that receive services at the Aurora House. Again, just a continuation of current practices.
I have questions on both of the rate sheets for the Fairfax and Arlington ones. Uh, I know we're adjusting the rates, but they were really nominal increases. Are we actually keeping up with actual costs? Like the day rate went up by a dollar. I'd, I'd wanna make sure that given inflation and other costs and rising salaries, we're covering those costs appropriately.
So that's really for the county in terms of its books, the agreement on how the city gets paid uh, or compensated for operating the house. That's in a, sort of our, our big agreement with Arlington County. And the way that works is that our actual costs are charged to the county, um, and, or split between the county and the city based on usage. And, um, and so the city's costs are covered in that way.
I don't think I quite get it, but.
So, uh, I'll follow up, uh, with a more detailed response, but that's my, my basic understanding.
Is it like the difference in a per diem rate versus the actual cost?
Um. Yeah, um, let me follow up with staff on that before I answer.
Again, I'm happy if the costs aren't going up a lot, but I just wanna make sure in light of all of our other costs gone up, that this one just seems really small.
Um, and then the last two are our normal, uh, requests for the library, for their, uh, normal contracts they use to buy books and electronic digital materials for the library.
Well, questions on consent?
I have a couple of questions, just about the last two. Um, how, like two hundred thirty thousand dollars on eBooks or the overdrive, um, is that a, how long is that contract for? Is that a ten year contract, a two year contract, a one year contract?
Um, that's our, that's what we're planning to use this year.
Okay, so every, every year. And that was already part of the library's budget.
That's right.
Um, and same thing with a hundred thousand dollars for refreshing books. So those are yearly costs. Great, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Other council comments or other topics for now?
So, uh, council, I did suggest by email this afternoon, uh, we've had, um, a few closed sessions about, um, negotiating position on a land acquisition relating to two twenty-two West Cameron. Do have an update for the city council. And if it's council's pleasure, we can have a brief closed session just to discuss that. And we do have a forum for that.
Do you have a couple, just a couple of quick thank yous?
Do you have a couple of things to support those sessions?
Yes. Very quick thank yous. I wanted to thank Letty and crew who did, um, some repainting of the crosswalks um, on Sunday, early Sunday morning. Uh, I think they look great and, um, gotten positive feedback from many community members over the past two years, I guess they've been in place. So thank you for doing that.
Justine too.
I was looking at Justine, so eye contact, but thank you, Justine, as well. Um, and then a thank you to the staff, TPW staff, who put the new ballards and striping on Columbia and Lawton Street. Since that has spent a worried mind for twenty plus years of the little soccer field and the traffic around that corner. So it was great to see that up. Um, and I'm optimistic that it's gonna help keep some of those little soccer players a little bit more visible as you're making some of those turns. That's it. Just wanna thank those.
Another good rapid response project out in the field. Actually, there's a, there's a new, um, I think the hawk signal work is going in cause at Oak Street, they started putting in new crossings.
That's right.
Uh, which is really exciting. Cause we can talk about hawk signals, I feel like, for years. So that's a really good, there's so many people play Frogger in that intersection. That's a really critical one, so. Kudos to public work staff for getting projects out the door and the bike trails and the trails crossings. They're one of my great thoughts. Dave?
Thanks. Um, I'll try to be on the session next, um, next week virtually. Um, I'll be in Europe again, working with Ukraine refugees. So I'll see how that will work. So, um, I'll be on that. Um, but I do must, uh, I must unfortunately comment, lady, on your statement that you gave to the news press. If it's inaccurate recounting of what you said, it is loaded with mischaracterizations and misconceptions. Mischaracterization number one, I don't care where disrevered volunteer, where boards and commissions. That simply is an absolutely wrong interpretation. In fact, by dealing with the perception and, um, and appearance of conflict of interest with clear guidance, will actually be strengthening our boards and commissions. Mischaracterization number two, we were talking about actual conflicts of interest. If you read our statements, they were perceptions and, um, and appearances of conflict of interest. So I would hope in the future that you see fit to talk to your council members directly because that's what a leader would do. Now, moving in a more positive vein, I appreciate very much that the city attorney has given us excellent sources of information, um, on, um, dealing potentially if we care to, um, on, um, the perceptions or appearances of conflict of interest. And I very much believe that we must move forward on that, on an expeditions basis to maintain the public trust. And I hope the council will agree that we should use those materials and see where, how we can go as expeditions as possible. Thank you.
Great. And thank you to Sally for providing that to us. I think we will all review that and determine appropriate next steps. And Dave, I'm happy to talk offline as always. Any other comments? Okay, well, let's move to the closed session then. Upon motion made by council member.
Karen, Lynn, yeah.
And seconded by council member.
Connelly.
And passed by voted city council, council wanting to close session pursuant to Virginia Code two point two dash three seven one one eight three for discussions, inspiration or acquisition of real property for public purpose or discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. Discussion for possible acquisition of a private property in the floodway at two twenty-two West Cameron. Council member Connelly.
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Leanne?
Yes.
Johnson Scott?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yeah.
Underhill?
Yes.
Arrie, yes. And time is nine fourteen. Yeah, now for the certification. On a motion made by council member.
Connelly.
And seconded by council member.
Underhill.
Passed upon affirmative roll call vote and open session to certify that only one public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and two only such public business matters as or identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened or discussed or considered in the closed session or known by the body. Connelly.
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Leanne?
Yes.
Johnson Scott?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yeah.
Underhill?
Yes.
Arrie, yes. Okay. Is there any more business or are you ready to adjourn?
We saw your man was ready to talk about schedule. We do that every time.
We still box, we still box hours and I'll be on. There we go. One motion made by council member Siskat, seconded by council member.
Connelly.
Leanne. And passed by voted city council, council would reconvene in open session. Connolly?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Leanne?
Yes.
John Siskat?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yeah.
Underhill?
Yes.
Arrie, yes. The minute time is nine thirteen P M. Now for the certification. On a motion made by council member.
Connelly.
And seconded by council member.
Underhill.
Passed upon affirmative roll call vote and open session to certify that only one public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session or made by the body. Connolly?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Leanne?
Yes.
John Siskat?
Yes.
Snyder? Underhill?
Yes.
Arrie, yes. Okay. Is there any more business or are you ready to adjourn?
We saw your meeting was ready to talk about scheduling, so you could do that.
What's up, Box? You saw Box hours, and I'll be in on Saturday. Make more box schedule.
In less than.
On this.
Sure. All right, we're already doing this, all right.
I just wanna take it apart, have a stack of them.
And then. I will have their schedules.
I do. How was that?
I might have recited.
We have a clean table.
Okay, well, the schedule.
Will you bring up the time?
Come on.
Sophie was officially using her time.
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna put it on the, it's not going to be a agenda, but. Oh, it is?
Yeah, it is.
For the last thing, though.
On the screen now.
Okay, so, um, Wednesday will be the ask the council at nine o'clock. Um, there will, there's discussion of a raising the flag event for Pride Month at ten o'clock, uh, that would be after that meeting. Um, on June tenth, regular sessions, uh, Delegate Simon will be there to present resolutions for, uh, city employees. Um, that's the, it says city residents, but for city employees right now.
It's residents.
Oh, for city residents?
We didn't have any employees.
Ah, well, thank you for that correction there. Okay, excellent. Uh, the proclamation for Pride Month, Operation Earthwatch recognition, and then the weather-ready certification by the National Weather Service, which I mentioned earlier tonight. And then the, uh, CACT will have its annual report. And I believe we want to add the Housing Commission as well, having their annual report on June tenth as well. Uh, that request just came in, so I've not put it on the list. So that's a pretty long list of preliminaries. Um, we would have the demographics chapter of the comp plan, uh, for adoption. Um, the planning commission is having their final public hearing on Wednesday this week. Uh, second reading for the budget amendment, and then all the consent items that we just discussed tonight. Uh, we'll, uh, strike the acquisition of real estate and the closed session for employee reviews would occur at the end of the meeting.
And I'd like to add a closed session to the end of that meeting, if I may, um, to talk about Pearson Square.
On the ten.
On the ten.
And can I also note, um, the EDA is considering a land acquisition using its land acquisition funds. And they, um, while we think that the council would not need to have a formal action on this, uh, we have encouraged the EDA to brief the city council on its plans and to, um, have council awareness and consent of, of taking that action, even though it would deal with, um, funds that the council has already, uh, allocated to the EDA for land acquisition purposes. So, um, that, the, the EDA does plan to discuss that at its meeting tomorrow night in closed session. Um, Jim?
So, who did you guys come to that June tenth meeting as well?
Yes. Uh, yes. So that's, uh, several additions that we need to update this, uh, this chart on. Uh, no meeting then on the following Monday and observance of the Aida Adha observance. And, um, then Juneteenth is in the, uh, middle of the week as well. On Wednesday, the, um, Budget and Finance Committee will meet on Friday, June twenty-first.
Just, no, rewind to the June twentieth, nine AM.
Yeah, sorry, I'm being hard, yeah.
And we have, um, uh, all councilly invited to do the annual reviews. We'll do them back to back to back.
I spoke with, I spoke with, um, Celeste about that, so Celeste knows that I'm remote, and said that it should be okay, which I am.
June twentieth, nine AM.
So that's a time.
What are we doing for a scheduling meeting that week? We're just not gonna have one.
Yeah, the plan is not to have one that week.
We're just making that white email off the schedule.
Yeah, we'll do that.
So nine AM. Twenty. Nine AM on the twentieth, all, um, council or invited. We'll discuss the reviews on Monday, closed session, and then, um, deliver them on the twentieth. If whomever is available or interested. I mean, I know everybody's interested, but whomever is available.
Nine, I don't know.
Nine to twelve, unless Celeste's supposed to be there.
Thank you. I just wanna make sure we are communicating that to everybody at the same time.
Right. Thank you. So then looking ahead to the June twenty-fourth meeting, um, Cindy will give us a general assembly post-session briefing. Uh, the Tanner Hill Historic District Final Consideration, that was the briefing you had tonight. Um, the salary resolutions for the three, uh, city council appointees, and then a discussion of council strategic priorities.
Sorry, can we go back to Monday, the budget and the number two, in light of our discussion about the schools, uh, school buses? Are we prepared to have that extra information discussed at the meeting on the tenth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, the following, well, so we have Economic Development Committee on June twenty-fifth. Um, back on Mayor's Agenda Meeting on Wednesday the twenty-sixth, and then GovOps on June twenty-sixth at nine. Uh, July one work session, storm order ordinance updates, granting of Lincoln briefing, and CIP quarterly update. And we cancel the eighth, which is after the Fourth of July. Kind of, Fourth of July's sort of in the middle of the week, but, um, after that, uh, weekend. Um, and then July, we'd have the commercial parking update with the final work sessions. And, um, there was, uh, I think a little bit more discussion about, uh, about that schedule, uh, no, sorry, that was the ADU ordinance. Um, so we wanna tuck in here a, a briefing for the council on accessory dwelling units before we start drafting code. And, and I think that will be in the July timeframe, probably late July. Uh, July twenty-second, um, first reading on the storm order ordinance updates. Uh, the Northern Virginia Transportation Commission, um, their sixty-eightth anniversary, a lot of proclamation for that. Um, the HVAC, uh, the Community Council, uh, HVAC contract approval, we'll, uh, have a briefing on the fifth and then ask for council consideration of the contract on August twelfth. Um, August twelfth, we'll also have the, um, ribbon cutting for our smart cities grant and, uh, traffic control boxes. And we'll do that in Daleville before the meeting. Um, the, the, uh, more discussion about that at the time. Uh, one thing I will note also that, um, out on Gresham Place, uh, we were doing some borings today, uh, as part of the engineering for the new traffic signals, uh, that will be going in at that location. And we'll keep the HOA, the Gresham Place HOA informed in terms of, uh, the final designs and, and hope for, uh, solutions and construction of those signals there.
The smart signals thing, given that that was a state grant, that's a ten million dollar one, as well as Dominion Partnership, feel like a good opportunity to maybe cast, cast a big net on the bike list.
It is a big task because we've got the state, the federal, we've got, um, current general assembly members and the state's Senator Sussel.
Didn't intend it at N B R C, they kind of called out Falster, which is one of the test cases for this, so.
Excellent.
Yeah, because we're doing the adaptive lighting, which is exciting, so. So this will be one of the eight, and so it's a safe location and we'll.
Wyatt, nothing on, I think we're gonna need a housing update July and August, I mean, that's a little, I mean, there's a dry spell here, can we solve for that?
Brendan's dropped in a moment.
Yeah, so, so we've got, um, memos in the works, and we will provide those to council in writing. And if there are follow-up questions, we'd be happy to, to, uh, make the council answer that.
What's the tax debate in the second reading for Gresham?
So, uh, Cindy, what do you think on the date of that?
It's in August, man.
Is, we're probably looking at July now, Brendan has another here in Virginia House in the streets, or they're doing an underwriting committee. We should have a, a date soon. As long as we know the closing date, the tax, second reading of the tax debate has to correct, so we'll be able to send it.
Is, is the, is the housing update that you're sending us, like, is that public information, or what is that?
Uh, we'll discuss it with the city attorney. Uh, my anticipation is it would be public, but if there are privileged things, we, we would discuss it with the city attorney. Um, we would, so, you know, one of them is the, uh, uh, the, the Fields roadmap. And, uh, that, uh, is one, and then the, sort of the plan for the Virginia Village Working Group. Um, that's, you know, both of these are, I think, are public documents, we just, we need to, I think the, we'll, we'll just think through in terms of what the public communication is on.
And then we'll be, uh, I think they're also preparing the, uh, portal housing update on homeownership.
Yeah, so they. Right, N H P, um, our progress on the homeownership program have updates. The regular cadence of the monthly updates on both that and Virginia Village is, uh, what we'll be producing.
So we're expecting July, an update on Virginia Village, particularly the closing. We are looking for, also makes sense to talk about the Virginia Village Working Group once we actually get that closing. Um, and then we're looking for, um, the N H P update. Is that in June or seven, July, I'm confused. Or we said monthly, but.
Yeah, so the N H P, I will check with staff, but we want that out as soon as possible.
Okay.
Because I think we missed our last monthly update, so we're behind. Uh, but we'll get that up.
Yeah. Okay. Um, and then regards to Fields, I think written approach is good, but I just wanna make sure I'm, I don't think that that written is a substitute for a council discussion. But I, I understand that we should, we should read the written history of it so that we have a better understanding before we all go forth how we're gonna discuss that. I think that's what we need to make sure we're informed of, so we'll do some reading and we go.
What'd you think of this, um, is the bike? I know we have community major meetings in summer on the three bike routes, which I'll feather in and update on how those go. Do you think we'll be done by the end of the summer on those, or?
I hope so, and so, um, I will plug in the dates for that. I would love to come back to council with the report on the public engagement on those in the July timeframe.
We have to keep it momentum now. Okay. Other scheduling things? And the plan is to recess after August twelfth? There's scheduling things, Wyatt.
And just so that pride, flag, flag rate, so that's one, that's fast, pride, flag raising on Wednesday will be at ten, because it was going to be after the scheduling meeting, which is not going to come. Or is it?
After the.
After the meet the council, right.
Office hours, after the meeting council.
Which still are on them, right.
Now, um, I will tell council, we have a meeting working on council strategic priorities that's supposed to start at ten o'clock. So if it were possible to start that at nine forty-five, that would be great, but, um.
Is it like advertised it?
Change.
Oh, has it been advertised as a public meeting gathering at ten?
It's on the list.
It's on the list, can I?
Yeah.
Can I ask if we're not doing the eight-thirty mayor's agenda meeting, can you do the flag raising at eight thirty?
The advertising issue, right.
Oh, we've had, it's kind of, I think, up to you guys on this one, but we've had a ton of R S V Ps from some other employees so far for that time. So, I mean, they might come earlier, but yeah, for the ten o'clock.
With the ten o'clock.
I'm not sure if we could post it for public officials if we go early. And I'm not, I disagree with you on which way we post it.
I think you could just confirm whenever works best for a timeframe legally noticing.
Well, it's really.
I just wanna make sure, I would like to be there, and I want, if it, we're not having a speaking, which.
So with legal, it sounds like eight forty-five would be great to do it before ask the council, and then we don't have a conflict with their work plan. But if it's not legal, then let's keep it at ten.
It's legal as long as it's not a meeting where you discuss public business with each other.
Um. I think, if, if I can, just one, I'll offer one consideration is that we also kind of thinking of it, like, last year was kind of an employee gathering, and we don't have that many employees here at eight forty-five. Um, but again, totally up to you guys, just.
That's an important consideration.
Could get R S V Ps for this time.
I think the, I see the legal, uh, issue as less than the, kind of the last minute, kind of scheduling change.
It's in a bucket, yeah. Okay, we'll see you all, so we can cancel mayor's meeting on Wednesday, and then we'll see you all at nine o'clock.
All right, thank you, council, for.
Thank you.
Talked to you in twelve hours.
Yeah.
He had talked to somebody before, I saw him at.
Good night.
Night night. Okay, thank you.